I stand to pledge allegiance to the police. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome to the July 20, 2022 Sims Township Zoning Commission meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Turn your microphones on.
Mr. Utter?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Reichman?
Here.
Ms. Dyson?
Here.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve of our agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
I will second that.
Roll call.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 15, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 15, 2022.
Second that motion.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Abstain.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Abstain.
Okay, with that, we will open the public hearings. Our procedure tonight is we will hear from our staff first about the docket, the case number here, 95-1. After that, we will hear from the applicant. After that, we will hear from anyone that is in favor of the applicant, anyone opposed to the application, and any neutral comments. And then we will shut down the public hearing and we will deliberate amongst ourselves with the right to ask questions. So with that, if we could start with staff regarding Sims case number 95-1. Mr. Snyder?
Good evening, Brian Snyder, Hamilton County Planning and Development. I'll briefly go through the original staff report and then I'll go through the addendum staff report. Hopefully you guys have a copy of both. The original submittal was heard. The public hearing was open for this case May 18th. This is a final development plan modification request to Sims 95-1. The site is zone double E, planned residence with subservient retail. This case was approved in 1995 and there is a resolution, a Board of County Commissioners resolution, that contains nine conditions. Staff did go through these conditions, finds that the developer would not violate any of those conditions, which gives the zoning commission the authority to grant or to consider a final development plan modification. So that was the first step. The second thing we did was go through the zoning resolution as it related to the original proposal. As some of you may recall, there were issues with the building setback from Union Cemetery being 31 feet instead of 50. The dumpster and the pay booth were both in violation of the side rear yard setbacks. The pay booth in violation of the rear yard setback had a rear yard of 11.7 feet where 50 feet was required. The dumpster was located four and a half feet and two and a half feet from the rear and side property lines where 50 and 30 were required. So those were both noted as issues. And then there was a lot of discussion about the site circulation. The site circulation at the time had everybody coming in from the private drive to the north and everybody that went into the site had to exit through the adjacent parking lot to get back out to the private drive to get back out to any of the public roads. There are no direct curb cuts from this site onto Union Cemetery or Fields Erdel Road, so everybody goes through the private drive to the back and then it's either Waterstone Boulevard or Union Cemetery that you can get to depending on which way you go. So that was discussed and then there was some discussion about the sign. The original sign did not comply with the signage plan that was approved as part of one of the final development plans in 1997. There was a uniform signage policy requiring a size, height, kind of orientation, color of the freestanding sign. And so that was noted by staff. There's a lot of discussion about all of these by the commission. The commission ultimately continued the public hearing in progress to allow some revisions to be made. The applicant did revise the plan and staff did prepare a revised staff report. That's the addendum staff report that I referred to. So the dumpster location, site access and circulation, monument signage, wall signage, landscaping and lighting were all modified slightly. The dumpster location was moved to the middle of the site in compliance with all the setbacks and no longer needs a variance. There was a driveway that was added, an exit only driveway that was added. It's not this plan, it might be the next plan in the set, Kim? I'm not sure. That's the existing site plan for the restaurant. And that appears to be the revised plan, perfect. So now you can see to the north, there are cars coming in and queuing to the right and then the exit goes out next to the entrance onto the private drive. So there is no longer any connection whatsoever to the adjacent property to the west. They removed that connection altogether as part of their proposal. Signage was more detailed. There is a building mounted signage that would be 12 and a half square feet on either end of the building above the entrance and exit from the tunnel. The 12 square foot channel letter wall signs would comply with the zoning resolution. The monument sign was revised. The sign detail that they submitted shows the right height, location, size, orientation. It does show the background being blue when it's required to be green per the signage plan that was approved in 1997. There's a note that says that it intended to comply with the policy and that it would be done by others. Typically, if it gets approved, they'll hire out a sign company to do that. It would be worth noting that it's not clear whether it's, they intend that the blue part would become green in compliance or whether they want it to stay blue. That'll be something you'll have to ask the applicant, it wasn't clear. And then landscaping and lighting, the landscaping plan complies with the zoning resolution, continues to comply with the zoning resolution. Some stuff was moved around when the orientation was changed for the driveway and the dumpster was moved, but it would comply with the minimum requirements for streetscapes and landscaping. There's one light pole that was, appears like it was left kind of over where the entrance used to be oriented differently than the rest of the light poles. It's the one on the far lower left side. It's pointed up and down, the other ones are pointed side to side. It looks like an error, it should be easily fixed. So a lighting plan that complies with the zoning resolution should be required if considered for approval and that is all I have. Can I answer any questions?
So go back to the signage. Does the signage comply with our regulations?
The sign regulations of the base zoning code require it to be 10 feet, at a maximum of 10 feet in height and 50 square feet in area. It complied with that previously. It just didn't have the shape and colors and orientation as the previously approved sign plan. So somewhere in one of these documents are pictures that looking down the street, down Fields Erdel Road, there's all those outlots on Fields Erdel heads.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
The same sign.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Brian. The previous site plan that was submitted by the applicant or?
No, I'm sorry, the original approved.
When you say colors, okay?
Yes.
Are we talking about, we're not talking about this application, we're talking about the previous owners?
So all of Waterstone had a sign plan approved in 1997 and that dictated colors, orientation, location. On the staff report, there's this picture that shows basically what they were intending and everybody kind of complied with that. It's like a maroon top with a green base and all of the outlots have complied with that up to this point. And so what they were proposing on their, the applicant was proposing on their original submittal was just their regular sign at the size that complied with COOP code, but did not comply with the maroon and green and orientation of the sign that was approved as part of the 1997 sign plan. Some issues were raised at the May zoning commission meeting. They went back and they complied, they revised their sign to add the top and put it in the same place at the same size and the only thing they didn't do was change their background from blue to green.
So other than the colors, they comply?
Yes, with both the sign plan and the zoning code.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions for Brian?
Yes. So as it stands right now, the application, the sign plan does not comply with the, with the plan, correct?
It's not clear whether they intended.
It's just, it either is or it isn't. I mean, not to be.
Comply with what?
With, with the, with the site plan that was approved.
With the approved 1997 sign plan?
Yeah.
No, it's blue, the background is blue.
And it also, the dumpster location still necessitates a front yard setback variance?
I don't believe so, no.
Well, in your report on dumpster location.
Which report are we referring to?
The addendum report from June 15th. It says?
Oh, yes, it does, I apologize. It's 40.2 feet. I don't, I don't believe that's, oh, no, it is, I'm sorry. I apologize, I was looking at the wrong thing on the site, I'm looking at the very small site plan. Yes, it still needs a variance, I apologize.
Okay.
It needs a 9.2, 9.8 foot variance.
Okay.
It's 40.2, 50 feet is required.
Okay. And we had asked for a traffic study, has that been provided?
Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I wouldn't know what to do with a traffic study if I got one. I'm not aware of having heard from the county engineer as to whether they've received one or not, but you can ask the applicant if they've had one prepared.
Okay. And then the lighting plan, you think, doesn't comply but only in error, is that correct?
I believe, I believe it was an oversight. I think that the lighting plan could easily be made to comply with the requirements of the zoning code. If the board were to approve, the final development plan, we would require a revised lighting plan that complies with all the requirements of the zoning resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, on the revised site plan that we have, at one time in the south, southwest corner along Field Erdel, that corner, there was a access agreement.
Yep.
Am I reading this correctly? It looks like there's a curb.
Yeah, they're proposing to cut it off.
Do we have any purview over that?
We do not enforce easements between adjoining property owners, no. That's an agreement, a legal agreement between two private property owners and it's up to them to come to terms on whether it is or isn't. If the adjacent owner feels like he has rights to come across the property and doesn't like that it's being cut off, he is free to take his neighbor to court.
From our standpoint, we don't?
No, we don't require cross-access easements, we didn't require one in this case. There's no condition that requires it from the original Board of County Commissioners to prove this, though. There's no legal authority to, I'm sorry, there's no zoning.
And the county engineer doesn't require it?
There's no zoning regulation that requires that connection.
And the county engineer isn't requiring it either.
The county engineer typically doesn't require anything between adjoining property owners, they only worry about the access onto the public roadway, the county roadway system. So no, I highly doubt that there'd be.
There's no.
I'm reviewing any kind of easement between private.
Fire requirement or?
It hasn't gone through the building process, it hasn't been, it hasn't been reviewed by the fire department as far as I know, but the site plan will be required to be approved by the fire department before it can be constructed. I don't believe that it was required by the fire department originally.
Okay.
But if the fire department would deny it, does it come back to us again that there's a modification?
Well, they would have to change their plan, so yes, it would come back here for a modification. Yep.
Anybody else? Greg?
Any questions? I do not.
Lisa, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
May we hear from the applicant, please? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Tom Tepe, I'm an attorney, I'm representing the applicant. 1 East 4th Street, Cincinnati, 45202. And with me is Kaylee Bevington, who is responsible for the revised plans that you have in front of you. I'd just like to make a couple of remarks, if I may, just to kind of make sure that we're all kind of, you know, in the same chapter and the same verse and staying on point. You have a revised site plan, it was heard, your comments were heard loud and clear, right? Couple of things just come to mind is, you may hear, soliloquially hear about why this isn't an appropriate location for a car wash. Let me save you some time. The trustees have answered that and they answered that decades ago. A car wash is a permitted use, make the mistake about it. So let's just kind of get that out there and whether or not somebody thinks that they know better that this is the right place for a car wash or it's not a right place for a car wash, there's only two out of three people that matter and that's the trustees and/or the county commissioners at the time when they establish the uses for this particular piece of property. That being said, you have a site plan, she'll go through this a little bit. I want to make sure this isn't a kind of do as I say, not as I do situation. If you look at the adjacent properties, correct, the dumpster, for example, is roughly in the same general location on the site as the one next door. Okay? If you look at the building setback, this building is set further back than the adjacent property from the property line. As far as stacking, that'll come up, I'm sure, it's always an issue when you come up with these things. Capitalism works, it works pretty darn well. Why do I say that? Because they're in the business of having people come in, utilize their service, and leave in the most efficient way possible. It's kind of like one time I had a case with a convenience store when the judge said, "Well, it's no longer convenient, is it?" I said, "Well, no, it really isn't convenient, so therefore it's not a convenience store anymore." So your stacking requirements are six. We've shown eight. And there was some suggestion, well, that it may spill onto, you know, the private drive. Mr. Snyder is very smart, he's done this a long time. The township really has no jurisdiction over private agreements. That is a private road with rights that have been negotiated through an agreement. My client has the right to use that and if somebody believes that for some reason, whatever they're, they're in the future when this is open and running, hopefully, that somehow that violates the easement that is in place for the use of that private road, like he said, they can call the question and see who's right and who's wrong. So keep in mind, six is required, eight are shown on the plan. Lighting, it's a turn of a pole, it's not an issue, we can fix that pretty darn easily. And then finally, the sign. You heard that it meets all of the requirements, but it's blue versus green. Just keep in mind what exists right now is a blue sign for US Bank. So for some reason, somebody was allowed to put a blue sign. You can understand and appreciate, you know, the nuances and intricacies of some type of trade dress or little color, it'd be like if McDonald's came in and they were purple and green. Title Wave has blue and there's blue there already, but at the end of the day, is that a big driver of this whole thing? I can't imagine that it is. If this commission was so adamant and they said, "Look, green means green means green even though it's been blue," we'll figure something out. That's not, that's not a big driver here.
Excuse me one second, just, just for the board's clarification, the sign you're referencing, that, that is the adjacent property but not your property, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I just.
Excuse me.
I just, I just want to make sure that they know exactly what we're talking about.
No intent to mislead, yes. There's a US Bank sign that's blue.
Thank you.
In Warren County.
Pardon?
In Warren County.
Understood.
Right.
Yes, I mean, this is a really odd shaped looking.
No doubt.
It's got different counties, different townships, different everything else. It's sort of melting pot of Northern Hamilton County, Warren County, et cetera. Those are the points I wanted to make. The property is owned for a car wash, the dumpster is in roughly the same location as the adjacent property, the, the building is set further back from property, so it's not out of line with the character of the neighborhood. The lights, turn the, turn the pole, no big deal. And the sign, it meets the physical parameters, green, blue, tomato, tomato, that can be solved pretty easily. I can't imagine that's a driver in a decision for you guys tonight and we can figure it out if it's mandated that it's, that's green. And the stacking, they have rights to use that private driveway, you know, it's been litigated years and years and years and years ago. The traffic is not a legitimate zoning concern. It isn't, it's just, it's been upheld because that's something that everybody bears. So given that it is, we meet the, exceed the requirement on stacking of eight versus six and if it will not back, if there is any backup, which they don't believe that they will, they want to get them in and out of there as quickly as possible, it's not onto a public right away. That's all I have said and I'll let Kaylee kind of answer any of the specifics as it comes to the details. If you, if you.
Where do you get eight from? How, how do you count?
For the stacking, is that what you're asking? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find eight. I was just talking about how you count.
It's double stacked behind the kiosk, so that's 2, 4, 6, 8, I believe.
Is this a new one?
It's based on, so if you put three kiosks, you can divide it by three? Divide six by three?
It's four per stacking space, I mean, four per point of order. So they've got two points of order, they're required to have two rows of four.
So four is the right answer, not six?
Right, I believe it's eight.
No, but you were saying if six was the requirement, but you're telling me it's four is the requirement.
I guess we had interpreted it as six, I guess six or four, either way, we have eight proposed, four per order point. I won't take up too much of your time, obviously I was here back in, was it May? So I won't get into the nitty gritty here, you guys are familiar with the applicant, although I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the applicant. Things to note that we changed, obviously we've already discussed the access with the neighboring property, I believe it's the pet land. Initially on our original submission, we had a one-way exit only onto the pet land property. That was a big point of contention at the last meeting, we eliminated that one-way only. So we felt like it was kind of a meet in the middle type deal. Our applicant really does not want traffic traveling from the pet land property onto their site, so this was kind of the solution that we came up with. As Mr. Tepe said, lighting, not a problem at all, we can rotate that light pole. That was really just a miss, that's not intentional in any way. The setback, I know, you know, it's kind of, where do we make this work and what works best for the user? This layout is what Title Wave has determined works best for them in their operation, which ends up putting the building where it is and within that setback. There was also a concern with sound and we have done a couple of sound studies. The loudest point on this site is a little over 100 feet outside the tunnel, so it comes from the blowers, that's the loudest piece of this site. So we've got the building as far away from neighbors as really possible, we've got that loudest point of the building facing out towards the intersection. So that's part of the justification for how we landed on this particular layout. And the sign, yeah, the sign's not a huge sticking point, they would certainly like to have their logo blue if possible. They saw the US Bank, they thought maybe that, it still fell within the matching part of that development, but signage is something we can certainly work on more if, if need be. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about specifics with the, with the site plan or about the applicant?
I realize that per zoning, we don't get into materials or colors, but you guys admitted materials and colors.
Correct.
Could you kind of walk through a little bit about what the building will be and the materials that'll be used?
Sure, just keep in mind, I'm not an architect, I'm an engineer, so, but I can walk you through what the building looks like.
You're smarter than anybody here.
[laughing].
Including the barristers.
Oh, thank you very much. So these are typically pretty nice looking sites, that's subjective, but I think they're nice looking buildings. They do a lot of split face block, gray tones and tan tones in the block, blue roofs, they also put a blue roof on the vacuum canopy that's matching, it's a gabled roof. And then a lot of glazing, they do a lot of windows, you can, you can watch the cars go through the tunnel, that's kind of a feature, it makes it kind of an attractive element. People like to see that, so a lot of garage doors, windows, a lot of glazing.
Yeah, so that's my question, so can you see the cars going through there or is that some sort of spandrel glass that you, you know, opaqueed out?
No, you should be able to see the cars going through.
Okay.
Now, here you have a stone veneer. We just said split face block.
That's probably me not speaking correctly as an architect.
So what, I realize, what's being shown is, I mean.
What's being, what's on that plan is what the architect is proposing for this, this exact site, I believe they're site specific plans.
Okay, because last time it was sort of.
I think, I think last time we provided a prototype, the title block should say Sims.
That makes a difference?
Yeah, it's, they're really, they're pretty standard buildings across, across all of their locations. Really the only time they change materials is if it's a specific request from a township or municipality.
That's if within their purview or we can just request?
If it's within their purview.
And then the canopy, what is that? What is, what is that for?
It basically covers the vacuum, so if you're vacuuming your car, you're protected from sun, rain. And it, I believe also houses some of the vacuum equipment. The vacuums are underground, there's tubing and pipes underground and then they come up the sides, come down from, from above.
And that's, both of those facades, both the canopy and the actual building, tunnel, that's, what is that, a metal standing seam facade, is that what that is?
I believe so.
Painted blue?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any other questions for Kaylee? Kaylee, right?
Yes, that's right.
Just for the record, did you state your full name and your address?
I don't know if I did. Kaylee Bevington, I'm with Bowler, we're the civil engineering consultant for Title Wave. My address is 1573 King Charles Drive, Pittsburgh, PA.
Thank you. So we will allow you to sit down and respectfully, we might ask some additional questions.
Absolutely, thank you.
Later, but thank you. So is there anybody here that would like to approach the board and provide any kind of comments from a positive perspective for this application? Anybody would like to provide any neutral comments? Anybody would like to provide any negative comments or opposing comments? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Jerry Atkins, I live at 11982 Bright Salt Lane, Cincinnati, I'm also the property owner of the Petland store, as I stated last time, a 6,000 square foot development that I developed in 2003. Mr. Tepe said there's no connection to the properties, there's actually a lot of connection to it and you'll see the victorial, that's basically Title Wave's site plan identifying because when you look at just their site plan, it shows that they self-exist and they can perform, but in fact, they can't coexist, they have to use the private drive that provides access to four different properties. And what I'd like to do is go through that presentation and identify what in fact a Title Wave car wash does. I want to look at car washes that are within the Sims Township District and what other Title Wave car washes do as well. I've been involved in the development since it was originally done in 1997, I was a consultant to Winchester Development, which was Tom Yum's group. This is a million square foot development and. Can I get my little button guy? Down, just page down. You can see that, that there's a lot of different components to the projects, it's a mixed-use master plan community, Sims Township and Warren County were very careful about how they did the project. It's a million square feet, which includes the largest shopping center in this north area, which was originally developed by North American Properties. There's the auto mall to the back, there's office properties and there's hotels. This is kind of an ecosystem and Tom was very careful about how he planned it. This is kind of an ecosystem, and Tom was very careful about how he planned it, so signs and detail and part of a master plan community that everything gets to work. They were very, they were very concerned about design, they were very concerned about what uses went here and how compatible uses worked with one another. So that is part of the project. Next slide, please. The Waterstone project, you can kind of see the boundary. There's one side of the project, and if you split kind of that line, you can see the auto mall that circles around and is contiguous to I-71. And then all the way to the, to the east, you can see the shopping center, you can see the little, little triangle where the four outpads are, there's some auto uses, and then it goes back to the hotels and the office users as well. Next slide, please. And what I want everybody to consider tonight are three different things, use, circulation, parking, fire and life safety. And use is important because it has, while it may be approved by zoning, it may not be a compatible use that impacts the properties that are nearby. Circulation, parking, we're going to go over, and fire and safety. Next slide, please. Can we hit that slide? One of the things I want to introduce to Title Wave Car Wash, can you hit that connection? Blank. This is a Title Wave Car Wash that was developed in... If you just left screen control, here we go. Oh, there you go. This is a Title Wave Car Wash that was just developed in Maplewood Commons in St. Louis. You can see the stacking that they have that is appropriate and efficient, this would be the same kind of Title Wave Car Wash here as well. You can see how they have four lanes, it would stack up to probably 16 to 20 cars. This is the car wash as you go through that central corridor. They have an employed cast station, they have two employees that are washing your cars as it goes into the car wash, and they have people handling the towels outside. It's a great, it's a great business, a great concept. Part of my experience was to look at what they've done, there's a lot of videos to show how they do and how they operate. I also went to the Title Wave Car Wash in Alexandria, there's also one under construction in Fort Wright, Kentucky. What Title Wave does is, on projects that they build, they provide appropriate queuing because they need queuing. These are some of the Sims Township and Hamilton County requirements, our legal counsel will go through some of those as well and how those are impacted. You can talk about self-service car wash or a full service, I would contend this is a full-service car wash. Next slide. The use, Sims Township, that's what we're going to review, we can go to the next slide. One of the things that I want to talk about, if we can just go up a little bit, there are basically, with this shopping center in the east part of the development, there's two access points. Those two access points, and we go to the next slide, those are on Fields Earl Road. Fields Earl Road is one of the most congested corridors in all of greater Cincinnati. What happens here, even in June, even last week, you have people coming from east and west, and they get to one and two, and they stack there. There's planned traffic lights, and then you get to that little top of, top of the triangle, and then there's another traffic light. Some let you go through, some you get, you go into the, the first part of the shopping center, you go back to the office back project, or you go to Costco or Target. But during the busy season, during the holiday season, that traffic is stacked up all the way to the highway and all the way to Montgomery Road beyond, and it creates a lot of congestion. But, if we go to the next, you can see the three traffic controls, there's about 60,000 cars a day that go through there, but it's much higher than that. Here are the tenants in that small little enclave. You've got AT&amp;T and Vitamin Shop, US Bank, Petland, and then the proposed Title Wave. At the beginning, this was a Perkins restaurant. When I developed the bookstore with Family Christian Stores, one of the requirements of Sims Township and the Fire Department was that there be an opening between the drive and the reason for the Fire Department wanting that is they wanted access all around the property, they wanted to provide for life safety. So it is an important consideration for the planning commission and to talk to the Fire Department. And the applicant has not talked to the Fire Department, they've not talked to the association, they've not talked to any of the contiguous tenants, because basically, they're saying that we're going to develop it, and how it impacts the rest of tenants is not our concern. So I think that that needs to be taken care of. Here in the property, what we're looking at now, we have one driveway providing access to four separate users. The former US Bank has 12 parking spots, there's 42 at the AT&amp;T and Vitamin Shop, and there's 36 at Family Christian. The way that the plan is presented, we have 21 vacuum stations and one ADA parking spot. What the applicant said last time is, the employees park in the empty vacuum spaces when it's not full. Where do they go when it's full? What do they do during the busy season? And busy season is defined during the winter, or after a rainstorm, or after ice and when they get salted. What happens then is, they park in other people's parking lot. They'll go to our lot, they'll go to AT&amp;T, they'll go to US Bank, and/or they'll go to the shopping center. We have, we have an absolute total requirement, we'll tow every one of their employees out. They're, they're hoping that they can benefit and take advantage of the other users. They're also hoping that they queue into that private drive, not a public right-of-way, but a private, private drive, which will negatively impact the center, because they say they queue nine cars. So we have two access points, we have three traffic lights, everybody coming through, that is just our property and not all the other property owners at Waterstone. So that is our internal circulation. We depend upon that circulation. Right now, it provides parking and access. If there is something blocking access, we have parking spots basically right in front of the building, and then also right to the north. So we've got five parking spots, our ADA parking spots front the driveway, we have double lights so you can empty a van, those are issues if you're handicapped. It's an important issue, it's an important issue to me, it impacts my family for my son to get out of the car. Those are things that are important. So if a car wash who doesn't care about that, they're going to block traffic, it's a, it's a fire safety issue. And then we have issues of access out of the US Bank and access in and out of the AT&amp;T. So the plan is, we're going to have nine cars queued, which is believable, certainly. Onward. Here's the Sims Township plan. Their plan is, they have one parking spot, 21 vacuum stations and nine cars. It's interesting, you have five, 21 vacuum stations and nine queued cars for your center. In another, one of the, you know, I've talked to, to other parking lot operators, in Butler County now, they're requiring that any car wash from that entrance to this, their property line, that they have 24 cars that they're able to queue on their property, because these kind of car washes are causing so much issue. They're not getting people headed out, they're getting people in and out when it's not high peak period. During peak period, they, they have to have queuing space. And I'm going to show, in, in your community, in Sims Township, you require, you have it. They have, Mike's Car Wash does it, does it. The Car Wash that's been there forever on Montgomery, and the new Zips requires it. But also Title Wave does it when they have the space to do it. What they think here is, they can take advantage of the private driveway for their own use, notwithstanding the negative impact we'll have on those property owners. So here are the neighborhood car washes in Sims Township. We have Mike's Car Wash, Zips, and Car Wash Plus. Each and every one of these are located in Sims Township. I think we've all been there, residents that have been in Sims Township at the beginning, we all went to the full-service Car Wash Plus, later Mike's came along, recently Zips came along. Each one of those are self-contained properties. Onwards, next slide. The first is Mike's Car Wash. They have vacuum stations of eight, they have employee parking of five, and car stacking of 28. As you can see, you can see three arrows, and they've got, you can circle up around the building, and then you've got three stacking stations that go all the way back that allows them to get 28. And even then, they go out into the private, into the right-of-way, into the public area, and they back up cars. But that's the only way that they can exist during a busy period, is to self-contain on their own lot. The next slide, please. The next is the newer version of, of Zips Car Wash. Now, the interesting thing is, they took basically the parking lot, what used to be All About Sports and Hobby Lobby, but since they turned that into a, to a lock-in store, they didn't need a parking lot, but they basically self-contained. So you can see, they've got 14 vacuum stations, they've got six employee parks and 26 cars stacking. Again, this is over 20, it provides the queuing, but they have two lanes that go basically out to the clean part of their parking spot, and then to the front entrance of their store. They also have multiple egress points for fire and life safety issues as well, which also was approved by Sims Township. Next. This is a full-service car wash, so really, we're just looking at the stacking, but this is directly off of Montgomery Road, and there's three lanes that stack going into the full-service car wash with 24 cars. So each and every one of these is between 24 and 28 cars to queue within Sims Township. Now, you may say, hey, they're so efficient, they can get cars through, through at Title Wave Car Wash, but let's see what they do in their new stores. Next slide, please. These are, and here's our comparison. We talked about 28, 26, 24, stacking's important, vacuums are important, employee parking is important. Next slide. This is another construction Title Wave Car Wash in Fort Wright, Kentucky. They have, and this is going to open up in a couple of weeks, it's got 21 vacuum stations, exactly identical hours, employee parking, but 27 cars stacking. You can see, they've got a long drive, they've got access points, and they can stack right onto the property, and they can get out very easily. There's also an access point to the west that allows them to go back, so that somebody coming in and out of the property can get in and out very easily. And this is an appropriate site, and what Mike, what Title Wave Car Wash thinks they need to operate successfully. Next slide, please. This is another entrance point to the, to the Title Wave Car Wash currently under construction on the greater Cincinnati market. Next slide. This is actually, I got my car washed three times on that Saturday, but I went to the Title Wave Car Wash. Now, this was an acquisition that they did of another car wash, and they turned it into theirs. But it has 15 vacuum stations, four employee parks, and 20 cars stacking. Now, the interesting thing, and I asked questions about the way they do this, you know, kind of the carriage car wash that is in Marine Mount and up in Landin is similar to what Title Wave does. They have great car wash, and Title Wave does have a good car wash. But you get in, they, they have somebody at the cast station to easily let you go through, but there's two attendants, when you come into their express car wash, they have two attendants that take a brush and they wipe off your front and the back windshield, then you go through. You come back out, and unlike Mike's, they have vacuums that are on both sides, but they also have spray bottles that you can spray the inside and your windows with, they also have clean towels and dry towels to give you to do it, which is part of the full car, full-service car wash experience. So that, that is what they deliver, and it's a nice product and it's a nice service. But again, they have here, which is not their site development, they have 20 cars stacking. Next slide, please. This is just another view, as you come in, you can see double car parking all the way down Alexander Pike, you enter, and then you go through the car wash. This is the Maplewood Commons project that we saw in the video. You can see here, they have four lanes of stacking, 21 vacuum stations again, five employee car parking, but 25, five per lane. If that doesn't count, the people that go through and then enter the car wash. So again, Title Wave, they're smart, they know what they're doing. They think that it's appropriate to have cars stacking to get in and out. They also have two access points in and out of the site for fire safety. This is what Title Wave does. Another car wash, also within St. Louis, right in Fenton, Missouri, is the same setup. You've got the queuing, it's a different kind of site, but you can see they do stacking on-site, they've got 21 for, kind of in the 24-car stacking. So it's kind of a similar story, whether it's, whether it's Mike's, whether it's Zips, whether it's Montgomery Car Wash, whether it's Title Wave and other markets, everybody, everywhere but Sims Township, they think it's appropriate. So as we go through this, but here's the Title Wave car washes, what they're presenting to Sims Township is nine stacking, 21 vacuum, one ADA. They like the one ADA because they're, they're either using the vacuum parking spots to park their employees, or they're going to other sites. All these are nearby other stations. I asked in Alexandria where they park, they said we just go next door. So that's their intention, and that's what they're going to do. So what they've presented to you is, we're going to stack nine cars, 21 vacuums, even though everywhere else we go, it's not appropriate, but it's appropriate here. Next slide, please. What it, here is the visual pictorial of what they presented. What's going to happen, though, is the next slide. So the next slide, this is what you're going to get. You're going to have cars stack out to both corridor areas. When you come in off of the east side, it's only right in, right out, so people are going to have to circle around and come in. I don't think many people come, most people will stack outside of the other entrance and come in. But the big problem with the site is also egress. If you look at where their one exit is and all the site, it goes right into their queuing lane, and that's exactly the problem with fire safety. They, they, they didn't talk to the Fire Department, so they in fact don't know what the Fire Department said in 2003 to us. They required us to have access all the way around the properties of the Fire Department. Let's say you have a life safety issue within a property, it's queued all the way around in winter season, how's that, how's the Fire Department going to get there? How's, how's the ambulance going to get through? This is also going to create issues beyond this project, because if Title Wave is successful like they said, they're going to queue out into the other drive, and during the traffic period, it's going to congest that entire block, and so the whole ecosystem of three traffic lights, it's going to be a disaster. You know who's going to get the phone call? Sims Township Police Department. They're going to have accidents here, and yet, traffic is an issue, but accidents, life safety is an issue. Being able to get into that property through one egress point that is blocked whenever they're busy, when you're likely to have that kind of issue, is an issue. They ignored every other property owner within this triangle, every one of us. Not one conversation. We talked to them about it, we talked to them about the association, still never talked to the association, didn't talk to the Fire Department, didn't talk to us, because they don't care. And what I would say is, you've got an issue here. You've got an issue here with the use. The use has a negative impact on every one of these residents and their property rights. It's going to have an impact on Sims Township and what you do from a fire safety standpoint. I think everything on their site is for their own use. Whatever happens to everybody else is of no use. What I think is very telling, and what market research would tell you, is that what did they do other places? They require queuing every other place except Sims Township. So all that is directly telling you is, their queuing is going to come from that private driveway. And you know what? Sims Township doesn't have jurisdiction, but Sims Township has jurisdiction over life safety and fire issues. You not only can get to those properties, you can't get to my property, you can't get to the AT&amp;T property, and you can't get to the bank. So, and actuality, Sims Township does have jurisdiction over it. I'm kind of, I mean, the situation that they got themselves into, because I'm in, I'm in the real estate community. Title Wave went to somebody who had the, the iron skillet, who's been a horrible property owner, they've not taken care of their property, they, they weren't a good tenant, and they were unsuccessful, they were going out of business. So they sold to an investor. That investor was approached by Title Wave, and they put it under contract for something significantly more than he paid. They thought they had zoning, they thought that they could get through, didn't talk to anybody, but now they're kind of in a pickle. They got to get this approved, but you know what? When you're in a planned development, you've got to talk to people, you've got to talk to the association. Didn't do it, didn't talk to us, didn't talk to anybody. And I don't think, from the standpoint of the three things we talked about, the next slide. The next slide, if you look at it, from a use standpoint, from a circulation and parking standpoint, from a fire and life safety standpoint, here's, here's the fact. They fail on use, it's not compatible with anybody around them, their circulation, parking, they're taking advantage of the other property owner rights. Where will there be litigation? Will AT&amp;T sue because they can't, can't get any tenants in, they're impacting tenant rights? Will we sue? Will the US Bank property owner sue? Maybe, but the main thing that they're doing, they will impact Sims Township. This is something that's going to impact your Fire Department, it's going to impact the property, what everybody does. As I said, the traffic that comes in and out of the center is enormous. You guys live here, you've seen it, and when you get here, if the ecosystem is unbalanced by somebody that's completely out of the queue, this is a user that is completely out of the queue, they're not doing what they do everywhere else. What they're saying, and it's clear what they're doing, they are saying, we're going to take advantage of this private queue, they're going to block my access, they're going to block Vitamin Shop and AT&amp;T, and they're going to block other property owners. There's no other way about it. We've seen it with the three Sims Township Fire Department, car washes, and we've seen it with the comps that they do for themselves. So I, I don't know what else to say. I said last time, without a lot of market research, fortunately Sophia gave me another month to go look at the car washes and get the facts. The facts are right in front of you on what's going to happen if this is approved. So that is, that is a hard no for this property. They will, they will undermine what we do, it will have an impact on our tenants, it'll have an impact on our customers and their safety for a car wash. So that is, that is our, our review of the proposed use. Any questions?
Real quick, going back to the 2003, I remember it being a Perkins, and then the lot next to it was vacant. next to it was vacant, where you built in the 6,000 square foot. So when you built the 6,000 square foot building, at that time, is that when the fire department said you had circulation through your neighborhood?
Yes. We were actually, we were at a meeting, I was at a meeting just like this, and they said, this site plan, we need to have access all around the property. They felt like they had access around all the other outpads, but they didn't have access around this. So they wanted to get to all sides of the building, and that's why they wanted to cut through. If they were blocked one way, they wanted to go through our parking lot to get through. And one of the things is, the restaurant, I mean, Perkins at the time was fine. What was approved, what's interesting, you talk about history repeating itself, we didn't buy it from the development, we bought it from Schlesky's Deli. Schlesky's thought they could get a drive-through here, and it was rejected because it wasn't part of the planned use, and it wasn't approved by Sims Township, because you guys in 1997 just approved it and said, aside from a limited bank use, you're not going to allow a drive-through where the restaurant. And so it wasn't approved. So we bought it from them. Imagine somebody buying a property without having everything approved.
So in the, one of your slides, you had the word fire lane there. Is there signage along there that's associated?
No, no. I mean, it was a requirement when we came here. The fire department said, we want to have access around both properties all the way around, so we have an access point.
So was that part of your zoning resolution, or was that part of what the fire department required?
The fire department required, and George, I don't know whether it was part of the zoning resolution. We, our use was zoned, was allowed, and a fire department for us to get permanent, the building permanent, they required us to have that.
Yeah.
So is there an agreement between you and the current property owner, or the former property owner regarding that?
I'm not aware of it.
But there's a private agreement between the property owners, like an HOA, right? Or a homeowners association, or a declaration, or whatever?
There's a driveway easement that says we all have to have access in and out of the property.
Yeah, yeah. So if they fail in that regard, that becomes a private matter.
Right.
Okay? And it's not a matter amongst this board, frankly, to care about in some regard.
I understand that.
And also, the circulation, that is not this board's purview, and neither is the fire department requirements. So you have a great presentation, and I, you know, think it's phenomenal, and you do make some good points, but the reality of it is, is our purview is the use, and some of the requirements among our code, and that's what we have to stick to, and we can't get out of bounds in that regard. So, you know, you made comment here, you said, quote, "They're smart, they know what they're doing." So, you know, if they can't get people in here, if it doesn't work, or if they get sued by you all, or the fire department says, you're not getting a construction permit, that's their problem.
Right.
And that's their stumbling block, and that's their problem for not doing, and I agree with you 100%, Jerry, that's their problem for not doing the due diligence that they should have done before they moved forward with this property. But that's not our purview.
George, I understand that, but I'm putting it on the record so that other people will understand exactly what happened.
Fair enough.
And it's not, you know, you and I have been doing this a long time, and as I see, when people don't do their homework, and they're not courteous to other property owners, and they don't care, and in fact, other markets, they're doing just the opposite, it says about who you're going to have as a neighbor. And, you know, will Jerry Atkins sue them? Maybe, maybe not. A national REIT owns the other building, they're probably going to get involved. We have a shopping center on there, we'll probably sue them. I mean, all those people are going to come out, so the real issue is what will be taken back to the user. It is not a good planned use. I mean, I'm all about planning and about integrity, and this is not a planned use. Yeah, it's a private driveway easement. Yeah, you can say it's not under the purview, but it's absolutely ludicrous on what they're doing. And that's really all I have to say. I'll talk to my friend, Mr. Teppi, later, but it's not, this is not, this is a family investment. It's not just a job. This is real investment. To site centers, it's a real investment. This is something that's going to impact, significantly negatively impact, the other three property owners. And I want their engineer to know that, I want their lawyer to know it, and, you know, maybe they'll do the right thing.
Well, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that has any comments? Please come forward. Be careful, and please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Jen Wattenhofer. I am with Site Centers. Property address is 3300 Enterprise Parkway, Beechwood, Ohio, 44122. Just kind of not piggybacking off Jerry, but the same purview. We are really concerned about the issues and the stacking that it's going to cause on Waterstone Boulevard, and how our customers get into the shopping center that Fields Erdel, Waterstone, and Union Cemetery. I mean, that's how all of the customers get in to go shop, from anywhere to what will be Ross in the next two months, all the way down to Target. And getting people in and out is just a nightmare, as it is now on a Saturday morning with this. I don't, it's just going to cause more headaches, more nightmares. I'm already towing vehicles left and right from the auto mall. We don't allow anybody to park there. We don't allow anybody to, it's all private property, so it's just another issue. I don't want to be unneighborly, but Ross, Best Buy, everybody, they don't like people in their parking area. So I get those calls, I have to be the bad person, I have to go, you know, tow vehicles, and I don't like to do that. And I'm just worried that come, you know, the holiday season, it's going to impact all the sales, and I don't want it to impact the sales. That's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any comments that they'd like to make?
Hi. My name is Matt Purniton, and I am the president of the Waterstone Association. One who's been looking forward to hearing something from your client.
And Matt, could you give us your address, please?
9140 Waterstone Boulevard is our building that we own. We're the one LCS at the far end of the Waterstone Association. Waterstone Association is just that. It's an association. It's kind of like a family. It's kind of like a group of just people deciding to be in a community place where there are certain standards, where there are certain things that are being upheld, where there are certain rules and regulations by which everybody agrees to live by. If Title Wave is permitted to buy the property and install and set up there, they will have to join that community. Now, that being said, there may be restrictions from that community, which they haven't bothered to check on, find out what they are yet. Not saying that they wouldn't, but it may be a significant problem. Backing up onto the street would be a very significant problem. There is egress issues there every single day, multiple times a day. I don't know if any of you guys go to Costco, or any of those places at lunchtime. It's already a madhouse. Getting into Costco's a madhouse. And Costco's a very large, developed corporation there. The other thing is, is that I think about, when I think about associations, I think about the association I live in. I live in an association, and probably many of you live in an association. And the associations do have rights and privileges on behalf of the people who live there, reside there, or work there, to be able to decide what rules and restrictions they would like to put on the houses that are built there, or the buildings that are built there. There are, there's a committee in the association that is assigned to, for construction, that's setting certain aesthetic pieces, like we talked about sign earlier, you know, but there are other things that have to be fulfilled with that, of which the car wash hasn't done the due diligence yet to ask anybody, as to what the association might say or might not say. So I'm saying that I know that it may not be a great purview of the ability of the zoning board to be able to say yes or no, but we do have some responsibility to our community that we do live in, to the livelihood of those people who are going to live here, work in this area, and who also shop here, and the traffic that is going to be going through here. These all need to be considerations. I know this may not be a direct piece or correlation of what you do, but it needs to be a consideration, because this community that we live in, if we don't keep working to promote it and make it better, and that's what we've seen with I-71 and the last several transitions and adjustments to try and make Fields Erdel Road flow better, and make Mason Montgomery Road flow better, we're even going through another one, we're adding a southbound entrance to I-71 now. All of those things have to be planned out and laid out, and made sure that people with businesses that need a lot of queuing or something are not putting their vehicles on the road. Another one in your same purview would be Chick-fil-A, the busiest, probably one of the busiest queues that are around, one of the fastest as well, I will say. So it is one of those things, I think, as an association that many of us will think of, they do have, the association does have the privileges and rights, and so do cities, so do municipalities. I will, if anybody would like, I would suggest you Google and see the nearest car wash to East Fourth Street, where the attorney has his office. I doubt there's one very close.
There's one right below us.
One right below us, in the building?
Yeah.
In the Olympic Park, right? It is a great car wash.
So I'm just saying, we do have, I mean, that is buried sort of in the building. I'm familiar with East Fourth Street, I've worked down there quite a bit myself. I'm just saying, when I Googled it, there's nothing that showed up on it right away, but that's okay. But I'm just saying, there are things that, for this community, that need to be addressed, and have yet to hear from them about interest in addressing them, and there are things that the association would like to weigh in on that, but it would be directly with them, and not necessarily this forum in peace, I hate to say that, but I haven't heard from them, and nor has the property manager for the association, heard absolutely nothing. And there are standards, like, and there's, people do have a right to pick and choose what needs to be done around them. Sometimes when it's even painful, you know, it doesn't fit what we want to say, that we don't need four car washes in a quarter mile from this knowing. So I think we need to, I hope you all think about that, and what you're doing.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your comments.
Any questions?
No, but we appreciate your comments, and thank you. Is there anyone else like to make a comment?
Good evening. My name is Brad Gibson. I'm an attorney for DDR Waterstone LLC. Address is 1077 Celestial Street, Cincinnati, 45202. You've heard a lot tonight already from the property owners. I think they have the most important facts and interest, obviously, here. I do want to point out, in the zoning code itself, it says, "It's the purpose of this district to provide sites for retail business uses at appropriate locations for service, and in appropriate relation to their surrounding to afford an attractive setting in harmony with the environs." And I think what you're hearing tonight is, this is not going to promote any harmony between their neighbors. We've heard of this easement issue. There is an easement, driveway easement for that private drive there, that requires it to be open for ingress and egress. Obviously, my client, Mr. Atkins, they're very aware of that issue. The plans themselves seem to show that their stacking actually backs up into that easement. It's not in harmony. One other thing I do want to add, and I may have missed this in Mr. Teppi's presentation, but it's my understanding that they're applying, that they're characterizing this as a self-service car wash. And the importance there is that there's a lot larger requirement for parking and stacking if it's full service. So I looked through the code, I didn't see that Sims Township defines what's full service versus what's self-service, but I think we can all see, that's, this plan is not what I think of when I think of self-service. I think of the thing where you pull into the stall, you get out, you do everything yourself, there's no employee there, you put your quarter in, and the vacuum starts to go. This is different. They have employees there. I think they would need at least four employees, maybe five. If this falls under the full service definition, which I believe it does, we're talking four spaces per stall, plus one for each employee, plus reservoir space for vehicles waiting to be washed, or three car spaces for each 10 feet of the length of the building. This plan does not, clearly does not fit with that. And just for the reference, and I apologize if this was discussed at the initial hearing, I was not here, but looking at Article 14 in the parking and loading regulations, that's Paragraphs 20 and 21 talk about the car wash. So I would encourage the zoning commission to look at this as a full-service car wash. That's what it appears to be to me, I think. If we look around at the differences between the Mike's car wash and the ones that Mr. Atkins pointed out in his presentation with the other Title Wave, this is clearly going to require a lot of stacking, a lot of queuing, employees that are helping this go through, the cars that go through, and then they pull off for the self-service part at the back. So we can talk about some of these private agreements, which are an issue, and I do think that the board can consider them in terms of the intent and purpose of the code, to have harmony in the designs here, in the planning. But we can also talk about the actual zoning regulation, which, again, I feel they're applying under the wrong provision of the code. And so I don't think the plan meets the requirements under the full service provision. So that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm a little confused, and maybe I misunderstood you. You stated there is, there is or isn't in the zoning, the definition for full service?
I did not see, I did not see where those terms were defined in the zoning code.
But it was defined in the parking, is what you stated?
There is a, so it's for the requirement, so it breaks down between a requirement, there's, for self-service car washes, you're required to have four stacking spaces for each stall, plus two drying spaces for each stall. And the provision above that talks about the car wash as full service. It says four parking spaces per stall, plus one for each employee. Obviously, the difference there, being if it's self-service, they're not anticipating that there are going to be employees that also have to park there. And then it lists this, or three spaces for each 10 feet of the building.
But it's interesting, they're very interesting point you bring up, and like you said, the word "full service" and "self-service" is non-capitalized, which therefore is not defined?
That, I think it would be at your discretion to determine what you think is full or self, but I, at best, it's a hybrid of the two. It's clearly not self-service. They have employees that are helping serve you. I think we can all understand that it doesn't meet that definition.
But that's your opinion, that you believe it's full service, right?
It's certainly my opinion that it's not self-service.
I think it's up to our interpretation, since it's not defined.
That's correct.
That would be my position. My opinion is that it's full service, it is in this board's discretion, since it is not defined. Based on the presentation from Mr. Atkins, including the video he showed, I think we all have some common experience ourselves that we can rely on in terms of what a self-service car wash is. I think we can, again, I would encourage the board to see this as a full-service car wash.
Since you've done extensive research, the car wash full service has a bunch of four parking spaces per stall, blah, blah, blah. Have you figured out what that number is for this?
I believe it is, it's in the 20s, I believe, and I don't have that exact number with But, you know, interestingly, you know, we don't, we saw Mr. Atkins' presentation, we don't know what the zoning requirements were in some of those places, if they distinguished between self or full service, but it looks like the ones that he was showing, they meet this requirement for full service. And they had the space that would, exactly, if they had presented that plan, with that space, it would have met this requirement. So I think the use is inappropriate, it's too small of a space, too congested of a space. the use is inappropriate. It's too small of a space, too congested of a space. That'd be our position. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Anybody else have any questions for Brad?
So it's 150 square feet, I mean, linear feet from end to end.
Right.
Of the building? Of the building, yeah.
Yeah. So that'd be 45.
Right.
That doesn't include?
It's three foot per 10.
I don't know how you would take into account the canopies as well, which are the stalls in the back.
Right.
So I think, I did.
It's three parks per 10 feet if it's defined as a full service.
Which I think if you include the canopies, comes out to like 70, but I think that's an or. So it's, under the other option, four parking per stall plus each employee, which I'm not sure how many employees they would have staffed.
Right.
All right, with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Having seen none, we will close the public portion of this hearing. So, folks, we can ask questions. We can talk amongst ourselves. We can make a motion. We can do a lot of things right now. But I guess, the first thing is, Brian, so we define it as, staffs defined it as self-serve versus full-serve. Would that be a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And how did, I mean, what was, what if any logic was used in making that determination?
You're not taking your car there, getting out, leaving it there, having somebody do all the detail work and then coming back and picking it up later. We've used previous commissions, previous administrators have used the self-service for this type of car wash, for all the other car washes that were pointed out in the presentation. So that number has been consistently applied and that definition has been consistently applied to all the other car washes in the township.
So if I could have the applicant approach for a second, I just, we just have one quick question, but I got to have you come up here, I'm sorry. So just so that we can, got to get some clarification here on your business plan related to what we're doing here. So do people get out of their cars or do they stay in their cars?
The best, everyone remember the old Rainbow Car Wash in Madison?
I do.
Well, you drive in, you pull up, you get out, they vacuum your car, and as a little kid, you get to go up this ramp and you get to watch your car go through. You come out, they give you towels and squirt bottles and they wipe you down and everything else. Here, you drive in, you stay in, you get washed, you either pull out or you pull in and you vacuum your own car.
Okay. So is there anybody there that dries your car or anybody there that wipes your windows down, that type of thing?
I don't believe so.
I don't, I mean, there's not really room for them to safely be at that exit point. But I don't.
It's just, I'm just asking what your business model is.
I know certainly there's staff at the kiosk at all times, helping with payment and that kind of thing. There's staff at the entrance of the car wash.
But do they, but do they go beyond just taking your money, maybe spraying it down, giving you a towel, whatever? Do they get into the physical labor of wiping a car down or your windows or whatever, like Rainbow, which I've visited many times?
It's like the Carriage House in Columbia Township/Merrymont. Somebody's there, they help you get your card in, you go in, there's a person that makes sure that you're properly spaced to get on the conveyor belt, and you get out.
Okay.
The vacuum thing has a vending component. You can go buy air fresheners if you want, that kind of thing, probably little bottles of spray if you want.
Okay. Does anybody have any, while they're standing there, do we have any other questions for the applicant related to this issue?
Can you give me some, or give the panel a response to the gentleman attorney's presentation with regards to stacking and how this can compare to your prior ones?
And how it compares to what, I'm sorry?
To the other locations in the tri-state area?
What I would say is, you have already answered the question that Mr. Atkins says was false, but it's true. We meet the stacking requirement. We exceed your stacking requirement. I can't respond to comparing this to the others because I have no idea what those zoning requirements are. You're comparing apples and oranges. If they say you got to have 50 car stacks per zoning, then you have to have 50. Here, you said you got to have six. So I'd like to, I just, I don't know what the zoning requirements are for those jurisdictions or even in another state. I'm sorry, I just.
It's eight, by the way. Yes.
Okay, so then we need a.
Shows seven?
It should have nine.
No, it's not on their property.
They fit seven completely on their property.
So it's seven. Correct?
It's tricky since it crosses into.
It either is or it isn't.
I mean, it either fits or it doesn't.
No, that's not true. The driveway that comes across here has a opening for their driveway, and their, part of their opening for their driveway is in Warren County. Their last couple of spaces that they're showing crossing their property line is inside their driveway. If it wasn't the property line, we would consider it to be having met the requirements. The property line exists because it's a county line. You can't have a property across two counties.
What do they own?
To the center line, probably to this. I don't know what the property.
So are you saying it's nine? Is that what you said?
I don't know what the property line is.
Eight.
But how did you figure out where the dumpster is then?
Because the count on this, this plan shows nine.
Well, that is the property line. I mean, they're showing that as the boundaries, but I don't know if they own anything in Warren County because we don't have Warren County's parcel information.
Are you able to give us any guidance based on the current plan that you have here and what the businesses have in a typical day? Are we going to encounter scenarios where we have, that the township has or Warren County has multiple cars lined up on the private drive? Is that a viable scenario?
I have some, I have some data I could give you. So let me go back here.
Regardless of what the zoning requires, I'm just curious as a practical.
Sure. So typical mature washes generate roughly 500 customers a day, which, just to note, that's less than like a quick-serve restaurant. It's a lower intensity use as far as traffic's concerned.
What does that translate into cars per hour?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Peak versus non-peak.
Yeah. So they can wash, as shown in that plan there, they can wash six cars back-to-back, you know, almost bumper-to-bumper. The equipment can handle more than 1,000 cars per day, so it's more than adequate to handle that expected 500 per day at a mature rate. So if you just do some quick math there, if they're doing 500 cars a day, assuming they run, let's say, 12 hours a day, that's 42 cars an hour, three cars every five minutes. So they feel operationally that they can make this work.
But what is, so have you done a utilization analysis that says on Sundays between 10 and 2:00 p.m., peak hours, you're going to have 50 cars come through there an hour or something like that?
I'm sure that they have done those internal calculations for themselves. I mean, they have over 100 facilities, so they know what they want to work for their sites.
Are the numbers for this proposed facility that you just cited, are those similar to the other locations here locally?
I cannot speak to the Missouri or Kentucky locations.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm working mostly in Ohio, Michigan, and Pennsylvania, and that's what they, that's what they expect in this region.
I'm just looking at this and thinking, if this is similar in terms of anticipated volume on a daily basis, if you have 20 stacking on these other locations and this one you only have seven or eight or nine, depending on how you count the numbers, realistically, am I going to see cars out on that private drive?
Possibly. I mean, that's, if that's, it's hard to say. I mean.
I don't know that she can answer that. Okay, she's not part of their business. She's the engineer.
Is there anyone from the business here?
Not that I.
From Title Wave, no. It's just me and Mr. Teppi.
Not that we saw.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a practical standpoint. I mean, I know it's the zoning requirement.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, just a point of clarification, do we have to notify the applicant that there are only four voting members here?
I believe they were aware and did not object at the beginning of the hearing.
We are aware. Yes, Mr. Flannin.
And do you not object?
We would like to move forward and get a decision tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions? Lisa?
Not at this time. Thank you.
I have one question.
Can I be shocked for a second?
I know. So Brian, you know, given the concern about the private drive and the potential for overflow into the private drive, can we, if we move forward with an approval of this, could we stipulate that they keep that private drive free and clear and/or that they use staff to direct traffic to avoid congestion on that?
No, since the private drive is not in Hamilton County, not at Sims Township.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm done, George.
So are we looking for three variances for this, what's submitted? We have the dumpster, we have the stacking, because you state the two of them are questionable, and we have the signage. Is that fair analysis?
It seems so.
The lighting will take care of itself.
Dumpster location.
I thought there was a setback from Union Cemetery, too. Oh, yeah, you're right. The last one. What was that setback issue?
There's two setbacks issues. The building setback.
And dumpster.
And the dumpster and the pay booth is 11.7 feet from their rear property line where 50 is required.
Three setbacks.
Yep.
Is the stacking, you're sort of on the fence of what you stated here in your write-up and site access and circulation. Two of these stacking spaces are being located partially. Staff is concerned.
Right.
And then the signage is.
Yes.
Blue versus green.
Sorry, yes, correct.
Okay.
So that's it. That is it.
Okay. And then the landscape light's just a typo almost.
So I want to make some comments here. First, although I believe the applicant hasn't done a very good job in their own due diligence prior to getting to this point, and I do believe, and I develop property all over the place, there should have been a better job with communication with the neighbors and certainly should have been discussions related to this private easement. But I want to remind us, the board here, that that is a private easement and that is not our purview. Similarly, the circulation is not our purview. In addition, fire department regulations are not our purview either. So when we go to vote, let's keep that in mind, that those aren't our purview, and we need to stick to what is in our code and stick to what is in our purview. Because as you can see, we've got more than one legal counsel representing parties here, so we have to make sure that we do our job. And if it goes forward beyond us and the fire department says okay, or the engineer says fine, or there's no lawsuit between parties, or that gets taken care of, that's not our purview. So those are, that's my opinion. From there, we can decide what we want to do.
And I agree with what you're saying, George, and kind of what I was getting at is there's five issues on the table for us in our committee or board, and that's the front dumpster and the pay booth setbacks and the signage and the stacking. I personally don't feel that the two that are half-on, half-out meet the requirement, and I struggle with the, I guess it's the front yard setback variance myself. So the other ones, I can go either way, but from what we're looking at, what we're asked to vote on tonight, those are the things that I'm struggling with.
I agree with you, and, you know, and I think even back to our original meeting, you know, my inclination on this was purely and exclusively to evaluate it without variance, meaning if we were to approve this, my position would be that we'd be, that I'd approve, that I'd be willing to consider it only if we made no variance modifications. So, you know, anything that's going to have a variance, I don't think is in the township's interest and it's not consistent with our zoning rules, and so I wouldn't be in support of that.
Does the signage issue, does the original plan or the association require me to green? Is that Trump what we want? In other words, if we.
Well, it was part of the PUD.
It's part of, yeah.
But you do have the authority to change it.
Right, right. I mean.
It was approved by the zoning commission. It can be changed by the zoning commission.
I don't know that we've ever decided we like the green versus the blue.
It's not our problem.
It's uniformity, but if US Bank, granted, it's across the street.
That's not our.
If it may be helpful, Mr. Chairman, I did review the original approvals for Perkins and Schlotzky's Deli.
Yes, please, please enlighten us.
Perkins was approved. The final development plan from Perkins was approved in 1998, and it was approved with the condition that the sign comply with the 1997 sign plan. It was shown with a connection to the adjacent property. There was no condition requiring it when it went through the zoning commission review. Schlotzky's Deli was approved with a drive-through on the property next to Perkins at the same meeting that the Perkins was approved. It showed a connection, and there was also a condition of approval on that site that the sign meet the requirements, and there was no condition about the driveways connecting. But they did. They, both plans showed the driveways connecting. Both were approved. The plan was modified sometime later to allow the construction of the building that the adjacent property owner owns currently or represents currently.
So it's always been green, is what you're saying?
The signs. The zoning commissions in the past have always approved it with the condition that it comply with the sign plan, as far as I'm aware.
What's that Kermit the Frog song? Any other questions, Greg, or comments, or your thoughts?
I struggle with it. I'm not happy with the circulation issue. I'm not happy with the stacking issue, but it needs the code requirements. And I have to have a justifiable reason to approve or deny, and that's not one. The setback issue concerns me. The question is, is it a deal breaker? And I look at variances, and is there a justifiable hardship that warrants a change from 50 to 31? That's significant. I have concerns.
Anybody want to make a motion? Anyone want to take a stab at a motion?
Hold on. Can't say I do.
Nope.
So Brian, we can make a motion to approve the development plan, say, in the setback? Or is it, how does that work?
You, you can, but the plan that would result from meeting all the setbacks would be so drastically different from the plan that's before you today that if that was your intent, I would suggest that you offer that to the applicant and ask if they would revise their plan to do that, or just deny the plan as submitted because you don't support the variances and let them come back. I don't, I don't think, I would not suggest that you just make.
I understand. I understand.
So either way, if we deny it, obviously, then they can resubmit, right?
They can resubmit something different than what they submitted currently.
Right.
Within the, I think there's a two-year timeframe for them to submit the same thing. It has to be something that's substantially different.
Right.
So to me, it's substantial. So, to me, substantially different would be the building had to be in a substantially different location, or the access had to be substantially different. Something along those lines. They have to be substantially different. Otherwise, your, your bylaws that require people to wait, I think it's a year or two years from the submittal of something that was denied before they can submit the same thing again, would apply.
Then if, if we're in substantial agreement with the application, except for the variances, let's just say we head that direction, then they would have to resubmit.
It depends on how you approach it, whether you wanted to give them the opportunity to ask for a continuance so they could do that, or you wanted to deny it and have them resubmit it and start over. That's up to you, Mr. Commission.
But your recommendation is to ask the applicant, based on the conversation.
I didn't make a recommendation.
He didn't make a recommendation.
Well, you're, well, not your recommendation, but what you stated.
I didn't suggest anything or make any recommendations.
I just wanted to be clear.
Completely up to you, as the commissioner.
Right. He, he outlined where we are, but he did not make any recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all.
I'll make a motion, just to open up the discussion. So, a motion in case of Sims 95-1, Waterstone Car Wash, to consider approval of a modification of the final development plan. My motion is to deny the application as provided.
So this would not provide any direction for the applicant?
I don't think that it's necessary.
Do you feel, Jeff, that if we add the stipulations of variances?
You know, I think we've made a recommendation to them that they come back to this meeting without variance at the prior meeting, and this is what we got.
Well, they did change the site plan.
They did.
That you're saying.
Not, not, not to the point where it has no variance.
Was, was that the recommendation last go-around?
I, I made that statement the last go-around, that I suggested they come back without variance.
Yeah, but we did not, we did not.
We did not make a, a formal.
No, so, so we did not make that recommendation?
No, that's, not as a board.
But you said it in the meeting?
Yes.
I'm not saying you didn't. I don't recall, but I just wanna be clear here.
Yeah.
For my record perspective.
So is it a motion to deny the request?
Yes.
Are we allowed to modify the motion or discuss the motion?
Well, I think we need to discuss it. There hasn't been a second. So, I think we need to talk about it unless somebody wants to second it and we go to a vote.
So if we talk about it, Jeff, can we, and I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that very much. And I think you made a clear statement earlier that it was the variances that threw you to this direction. So, in essence, we're denying it based on not meeting the front yard, the variances listed in amendment
That's right.
under dumpster location, the signage, and the question, and really the stackings on the fence. But is that the basis of your recommendation, then?
That is. That there's a number of variances that have been requested that I don't agree with, and so my recommendation is that we deny this.
So let me play devil's advocate. Would you, would you vote to approve it without the, the variances?
I think that Brian stated that that would create, you know, Brian, I don't know exactly what your words were, but that would be problematic because the way that, that the site plan is developed now, it couldn't, it wouldn't fit in that footprint.
It would be a drastically different plan if it didn't have any setback variances.
What was that?
I would, without the variances.
Yeah. Is that what you're asking?
That's what, that's what Georgia, they asked about. Jeff would say, I would.
But that would, that would basically, that would basically cause a revised site plan.
Right. So, you know, this at least gives them, they can go back, figure out what they need to do, rework it, reorganize it, resubmit, and we can try this all over again. Quite frankly, I think it's giving them the clearest direction to.
Would that be a scenario where the resubmittal would be easier versus having to go through the entire process again?
As far as how easy it is, continuing it and let them submit a revised plan for next month's meeting would be the easiest, but I didn't hear that they were interested in doing that. And barring that, because of the, the changes that would be necessary to meet all the requirements, I think that Mr. Reickman is correct.
I guess the applicant's been proposed. They had all the opportunity in the world.
I'll second the motion.
We can't get a hold of our client to determine whether, he's at another, I think he's at another county, Pennsylvania, where it is. If you'll indulge it, we can go take, ask for continuance, see if that plan is viable, if at all. If it is, we can come back. If it's not, we can come back and just ask for the right, based on the plan as it exists.
Those are your, those are your, that's your, I mean, those are your options. You either, you either ask for the continuance, or we move forward, and I think you could kinda see what's gonna happen here.
And if, if, for whatever reason, the plan can't work without the variances, then we understand you'll have to vote on the plan that is
Right.
presented to them.
Right.
Correct. That, I think that would be.
We, we.
That would give us, that would give us a chance to sit down and.
Or, or you can withdraw your request prior to the vote.
I think we'd rather ask that it be tabled till next month.
Can it be tabled with the second?
You, you cannot table it at this point before you solve the issue of the motion that was seconded to deny.
How does that work?
You can withdraw, you can withdraw the second.
I can withdraw my.
You can both, you can either withdraw your second, or you can withdraw his motion.
Or he can withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Somebody else can make a new motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Because I wasn't gonna withdraw.
Exactly. I'll withdraw my second.
So the second has been withdrawn.
So then you have to give it, does anybody else want to second it, since you're not withdrawing your motion? So now your motion failed for a lack of a second.
Right.
But it's of record?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why we had to go through what I just.
I understand. No, I mean that there's a clear understanding of where we're looking and what we're trying to do.
And is this the point in time when I come and say, respectfully, we would ask that it just be continued to the next meeting?
Yes.
You're the barrister.
Wow, that's debatable sometimes. You get what you pay for. That's the request that we're making to the chair and to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we vote on that?
Yes.
That's not a motion. That's a request.
We have, we have to make the motion.
We have to agree to.
We have to make the motion, and then we have to approve it, if, if we wanna do that. That's our, that's our decision.
Motion to continue in progress?
Well, we're, we're motioning to table if we want to motion to table. It's at our option.
I would like to.
So we have a motion to table. Does anybody second that?
Is that your motion?
That's his motion he just made.
Quick discussion. Jeff, are you okay?
Look, I, I think that this is, you know, we have gone through this, you know, around and around. I think, again, I mean, although it's outside of our purview, I, I certainly think that the, the neighbors to this property are, have not been treated with, with decorum and fairly, and I would suggest that if we do table this, that the applicant use this period to maybe have some discussions with the fire department and with the HOA and with the other neighbors, and see if they might all come to some resolution that, that will potentially impact our, our future decision.
I'll second.
So that's a second to table.
I'll, I'll have an additional comment. I, I differ from you, Jeff. I believe that we should stick to what is in our purview. The fire department, the private agreements, those are not our purview. I do agree it's bad business. I buy, I buy property all day long. I would never do it this way, but, you know, that's not my business. It's their business. And the reality of it is, is similarly, we don't discern whether or not there should be a fourth car wash in our community. That's the economics of, of what's out there, and we don't decide, we don't pick winners and losers in that regard as well. So, we just have to remain steadfast to our code, and I think we did that tonight with not allowing the variances, and I applaud my board for that. But let's be careful with any additional recommendations outside the purview of, of what we are permitted to decide and not decide upon. That's my opinion.
Mr. Eder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reickman?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Epstein.
Okay. We're on to old business. Do we have any old business? Kim?
There's none.
Any new business?
So no meeting in August?
Yes, this one.
Yeah, this one.
Well, they don't have, do they have to do it next?
Unless they withdraw.
Oh, so you have to be here next month?
Unless for whatever reason, you can't make it work, can you?
No, we, we.
No, I was just asking for my.
No, it, it will be scheduled next month unless for some reason you can't make it.
Yeah.
Or.
I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure they're gonna tell me I have to have it.
Or, 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 or if, if we don't have a quorum.
Definitely.
Okay?
But there, the meeting, the meeting's already scheduled. It's the third Wednesday of August in this room at 7:00.
What date is it?
The third Wednesday?
He will not be here.
Do I have a, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Eder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reickman?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Good job tonight. Thank you very much.